Yeah, you see the copy of the policy? On the table?
For those last ones with the first class.
Oh.
The six were good.
Yeah. No, we just had the minutes, the what you call it? You wait, what? I can say what's that on your desk? It was, I don't get it.
I'm gonna go grab the books for y'all, I apologize.
Well, they were supposed to be the letter with the agendas.
But no, what's the meat in your head? The meat, what's the meat in your head at all of it? He said.
How y'all doing?
Doing up there, you get to see. Absolutely. That's absolutely bad.
Right, but. I was looking at my street.
Yeah. Mail merge? What your girl said?
She said. I thought you guys still know nobody's gonna get this stuff. So. I thought you knew, I said, you know, I could take every dude with a little my hair. Cause I brought you here, you brought you here. All gone. I said, I'm going to go change your disgusting shoes. Really, check it out. Go and just stay a little. Do voice to speak. I can't save myself.
Yeah. Time, hours, time. And I said.
Just party time. They called you up from a birthday? Oh, I think, I think she talked about, I guess she was saying, um.
Oh, wait.
I guess she said, hi. You don't text me back? I, I talked to her.
Yeah.
Talked to her. I guess you don't. I just said, you don't text me back? I can be your. She said, when? You called me, we talked.
Right.
Yes, I called you back, and I talked to somebody, and you came back. Oh, what you gonna do? She says, hey, I like you. And I said, well, I think it's right. You never called me back?
Recording in progress.
I'd like to call to order the February 5th, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission meeting. Staff, please confirm the following. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act, a copy of the agenda was sent to the news media, persons requesting a notification, and posted on the bulletin board located in the county administration building. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Staff, can you please take attendance for today's meeting?
All right. Johnson? Uh, Taylor?
Here.
Grady?
Here.
Frierson?
Here.
Yonky?
Here.
Cirx?
Here.
Durant?
Here.
Mets? Duffy?
Thank you, staff. I did hear from Mr. Duffy and Mr. Mets. They're both out with illness. Wishing them well. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 5th, 2024, Richland County Planning Commission meeting. As planning commissioners, we are concerned residents of Richland County who volunteer our time to thoroughly review and make recommendations to county council. Our recommendations are to approve or deny road names and zoning map amendment requests. Per Title VI, Chapter 29 of the SC Code of Laws, planning commission may also prepare and revise plans and programs for the development or redevelopment of unincorporated portions of the county. Once again, we are recommending body to the county council, and they will conduct their own public hearing and take official votes to approve or deny road names and map amendments and tax amendments on a future date to be published by the county. Tip, uh, council typically holds zoning public hearings on the fourth Tuesday of the month. Please check the county's website for updated agendas, dates, and times. Pause for a minute for Mr. Price, thank you. Uh, please take a note of the following guidelines for today's meeting. Uh, please turn off for silence any cell phones. And please remember, this meeting is being recorded. Small crowds, I'll leave it at that. Gonna go ahead and move on to number three in our agenda, which is additions or deletions to the agenda. Are there any motions for additions or deletions from the agenda today, commissioners? Let's also look at any motions to amend the agenda. Hearing none. Feel like we can move on to number four on the agenda? That would be the approval of minutes from prior meetings. The staff provided the commission with copies of the transcript of the commission's December 11th, 2023 meeting. Do any commissioners have any comments or concerns regarding these transcripts?
Chairman, move approval of minutes. December 11.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Uh, we have a motion to approve the amendments. Do, uh, we have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Durant, thank you. Staff, please take a vote.
Those in favor of the approval of the minutes from December the 11th, 2023? Um, Yonky?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Johnson? Duffy? Mets? Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Cirx?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, staff. We can move on to number five, which is our consent agenda. A brief explanation of the consent agenda is that it's an action item that allows this commission to approve road names and map amendment requests. I don't see anyone here, um, that signed up to speak. Ms. Frierson? Any names? No? Gotcha. And I don't see any map amendments on our agenda today. So, the consent agenda would just, uh, have the road names. Uh, that would be item 5A. Commissioners, uh, do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Either approve or deny it? As chair, I will make an emotion to approve the consent agenda, which would be the road names. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. We have a second for the consent agenda, which just includes road names. Staff, can you please take a vote?
Those in favor of the, um, consent agenda, item for the approval of road names, which is, um, 5A? Those in favor? Um, Yonky?
Aye.
Frierson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Durant?
Aye.
Taylor?
Aye.
Cirx?
Aye.
Grady?
Aye.
All right, motion passes.
Thank you, staff. Uh, with this, we move on already to the chairman's report. Uh, we are in a transition season as we go from the old code to the new. So, this is a quiet February 1st meeting of the year. So, I just, again, say thank you to my fellow commissioners for coming out. Um, each month, spending time reviewing, traveling, uh, to look at these cases. We're all volunteers, so just thank you so much for what you do. We can, on to number seven, which is our planning director's report. Mr. Price?
All right, so the, within the planning director's report is a report of the actions of county council from their December zoning public hearing meeting. Um, that is in your packet. Basically, it's the last page. Sorry about the page numbers. But those are the actions that they took on regarding some cases that y'all previously, that previously came before the planning commission. That would be.
Thank you, Mr. Price. If we are ready, we'll move on to number eight. Other items for discussion? Number eight, A, Olympia Mill District Historic Overlay. Staff, please provide more input.
Okay, one of the, um, again, as, as Chairman Yonky stated, we are moving into a new land development code, uh, starting March 1st. So, for this particular one, we're gonna kind of get ahead of the game, um, just so we can give you a little information. It's not for you to take any actions, but, um, just to give you information. Um, one of the new, um, I guess, this could, one of the new allowances within the land development code or the new version that we have is called a Neighborhood Character Overlay District. And you'd receive, this is actually on page 3-99 of your code, for those of you just got the binder. But we also passed our individual sheets of those pages to you. Um, as stated, um, the intent of this district is to protect and preserve the unique designs, features, and characters of established neighborhoods throughout the county and to promote, promote new construction that is compatible with the existing neighborhood character. So, in this particular case, we are looking at the Olympia area. And one of the criteria, and I won't go through each one of those, but one of the criteria for establishing an individual neighborhood character overlay designation is that a master plan, um, for that area should have already been adopted. And for the Olympia area, that master plan has been adopted. It is the Capital Mill, what was it, Martin? Capital City Mill District Plan. And that, that has been adopted by Richland County. Um, so what we did was, we pulled the, some architectural design and guidelines, um, from that master plan area. Um, and I believe you will all receive copies of this. And so, if, more specifically, rather than going through the entire document, because the entire document is more, the, the first couple of chapters are real more information, little background about the Olympia area. But once you get into, to chapter three, it really starts to establish more guidelines. And that would be on page 39, more design guidelines for the Olympia Mill area. Uh, one of the things that the overlay will allow us to do is to kind of get away from just guidelines, which many times can be very suggestive. Um, you know, a lot of should, um, can, may, you know, those type words. So, what we, in order for us to have an effective overlay, we really need this to be more, um, defined and required. And so, what we were going to, what we're doing is, we're looking at the design guidelines that are part of the architectural design, um, guidelines from the Olympia Mill Village Plan. And we're going to incorporate those into a overlay designation. As I stated, there are certain requirements in order to establish, um, establish an overlay, and I believe looking at, um, F3 and kind of going through from age, you know, all that items under A and B, that those have been met. Uh, those are things that staff has already looked at. Um, what will primarily be focused on would be on four, the standards for the Neighborhood Character Overlay Districts. And that would be on page 3-100. So, as you say, you will note, it says, each district shall establish standards. And that is, that is what we will be doing for development and redevelopment, including but not limited to standards meeting the following. And it goes from A to, A to V. Uh, so we've always, already as a staff started taking a look at some of these. Um, because what we want to do is, gonna use the guidelines for the Olympia Mill Village to ensure that a lot of the standards that are within there, um, excuse me, a lot of the guidelines that are within that can be applied as standards. There will be some cases where maybe the, the, um, guidelines missed a couple of, um, missed a couple of requirements that we as a staff feel may be important, and we will incorporate those ourselves. Uh, we're asking that you, as the planning commission, also take a look at, at the document. And again, I think if you look at the first couple of chapters, chapters one and two, it should give you a good idea of really the intent of the Olympia Mill neighborhood area. And what hopefully this overlay district will help to preserve, um, in that area to help with when it comes to new development, oh, bless you, new development, reconstruction, to keep the, the historical nature that they, they've established, um, and community desires to have. Um, there will be a number of, um, things that we will need to do. Again, as a staff, we're actually gonna kind of treat the draft and ordinance regarding this, almost like a PDD standards. But we will actually make sure that all of these items are addressed in some capacity or the other. And again, we expect the, um, num, the numbering of these, um, items to increase, because there'll be some more things to add to it. And again, we look forward to your input. And also, there will be input from the community, um, to come in and also speak on this. Uh, before I probably kind of turn it back over to you, uh, Mr. Chair, one of the things that we're probably gonna do, this may take a little longer than we may have anticipated, but we want to make sure this is done right. And so, I think one of the things that we will do is, is we start working on the actual language, to what it should look like. And then what we want to do is then give notification to all of the residents, or at least the property owners within the Olympia area, to allow them to know what potential changes may be coming, to allow them to have the opportunity to come in and speak before the planning commission and ultimately county council, um, as this, as your recommendations are forwarded to them. So, this could be something that may take, um, a couple of months. But again, we want to make sure this is right, that there's proper notification to, to residents and property owners, and that any input can be brought forward, um, to you in making your decisions.
Thank you, staff. Commissioners, do we have questions to staff for this, as we're starting to think about this overlay district?
Yeah.
Commissioner Cirx?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Price, um, I, I was looking up before we came here, the, um, and, and you answered one of my questions right off the bat, that the, uh, master plan that this would fall under was the, the Capital City Mill, um, master plan. Is it, i- is, is the requirement that the, um, the, the, the neighborhood that uses the master plan, that the district lines are, are the same as what's in the master plan? Or just that it, the neighborhood fall within the area outlined in the master plan?
Again, this is a nu, new, um, this is new for us as a staff, so we're trying to figure it out along the way. But I believe as I've read this, that it doesn't require the, the entire, um, boundaries of the, of the master plan to be also included with the overlay. Because in some cases, you may have certain sections within a master plan area that you really want to focus on first. But it is not required that you essentially take the same boundaries. Uh, in this case, the Capital Mill District, is that right? Capital Mill District, Master Plan. And, and, um, use that for establishing the, what would be known as the Neighborhood Character Olympia Overlay.
And that sort of gets to another question that I had. Not so much for this, because as I saw the, the district lines drawn in, in the Olympia, it was contained within the master plan for, uh, for the Capital City Mill, uh, District Master Plan. But if there were, say, in the future, a neighborhood that, uh, maybe, you know, was a neighborhood that wasn't entirely contained within a, a master plan, say, that there were district line, or a neighborhood that kind of straddled the border between, uh, master plan and not under the master plan, i- is there any potential for, um, I guess, problems down the road, um, under this sort of, uh, these, these guidelines?
N- no, sir. Hopefully, I'm answering your question correctly here, but no, sir. If it's not part of the original, the master plan for that area, then it could not be included with the overlay standards that we'll be putting in place. So, it just wouldn't be a part of it.
Okay. Staff, thank you, Commissioner Cirx. Any other questions? Yes. Commissioner Grady?
Um, two, two sort of open-ended questions I want to, uh, pose to staff here, um, having, having reviewed this. Because I certainly appreciate the value of, of what the, what this document and what the greater plan are intended to do, which is to preserve a historic resource. But, um, as with all things, there are trade-offs. So, I'm curious, um, what sort of effect staff would expect implementing something like this to have in terms of the affordability of the housing and the ability, uh, for a, a working or middle-class household to maintain the housing in a way that comports with the plan? I ask these questions because personally, I, I live in a, sorry. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I was, I was just talking to staff.
Okay. Uh, just, this, this is something that I, I've experienced personally, um, within the city of Columbia, not, not the unincorporated county. But, um, the, the costs borne by the, the homeowner or tenant of, of maintaining the property in the way that the historic district intended to be maintained can be a, a burden. I happen to be fortunate enough that I, I can afford that sort of thing. But, um, you know, I, I have concerns that it could lead to, to gentrification or other adverse consequences, um, in circumstances like this. So, I'm, I'm curious, what sort of, was there any sort of analysis to determine, um, the impacts that this could have in, in that, uh, in that space?
Are you referring to us with this overlay that we're proposing?
Yes.
Primarily. I mean, we haven't really looked that deeply into this yet. Um, and those are the, those are some of the things that, that what you're bringing forward is the type of, um, discussion that we would like to have, is when we go forward with these standards. Because you're right, you don't want to put anything in place that in some ways going to harm, you know, property owners, um, as they try to, you know, maintain their own upkeep. Because you're right, it can be affordable. So, right now, I don't have a specific yes or no, or I can give you the numbers or, or anything along those lines. But what I can tell you, that those are the type of things that we want to discuss as we develop these standards. Um, and again, there may be ways to establish those standards, but at the same time, also kind of give certain options to existing structures and uses that would make it, you know, potentially affordable in some ways, uh, for property owners to maintain without absorbing a, a necessary cost.
Um, I have a second question. All right. Um, the, the other question I have is, is about sort of where, and, and this again may not be a question that you've given that much thought to yet, but looking at the, looking at the text of the, the overlay district's language, it would appear that almost any neighborhood that has existed for more than 20 years could have a plan and essentially, um, prevent any, any substantive redevelopment of, of any of the real estate. I, I guess my question would be, is there, um, is this intended to be a sparing option? Or is this intended to be a, something that is made available to all neighborhoods that would potentially qualify for it?
Well, I mean, first of all, uh, remember, in order for us to enact any overlay dis, district, a master plan should have been in effect for those neighborhoods. Again, there, as we bring these things forward, we do need to kind of look to see if it's appropriate. If it's appropriate for some of the neighborhoods. I think, just, and I'll use what we proposing to bring before you now, so the Olympia area. So, you know, once you go straight to the purpose, if the intent is to protect and preserve the unique design, features, and character of an established area, which is, um, found at the purpose statement under 3-9, um, 3-99 at the top. You know, I don't know if that necessarily would apply for many of the other areas. And also, I think one of the things that you will see is that, you know, there is certain criteria that is in place that I don't believe that, while I think that the overlay designation is good, I just don't think that applies, it's something that you would be applicable to all neighborhoods that have a master plan in place. Well, that's why we go through the, the process of looking at, having a master plan, establishing, potentially establishing an overlay designation for, within that master plan. But go through the process of bringing it before you as the planning commission, also opening up to the citizens within an area, and also to examine it further. You know, those are the things that it may turn out that, uh, overlay may not be the most appropriate, um, way of helping to preserve that area. There may be other ways that we can do that. But the idea is, it's on the table, because it has a master plan, and it gives us an option to look further to find ways. Because one of the, I would say, um, we have, um, Mark here, uh, who's one of my neighborhood planners. Um, and we've all had these discussions. I think one of the weaknesses of some of our, our master plans is that they're very suggestive, with very little teeth in it to enforce things in a way that we think would help an area. So, it's like, here, you have this master plan, but what are we doing to help promote some of the guidelines and objectives that are found within that master plan? Um, I think the only one that we have, that I would say is in place is when we adopted the Crane Creek Overlay, which later became its own zoning designation. So, what was found with, um, the, the, the standards, um, for, and guideline, well, I wouldn't say guidelines, and the, the development standards and uses, uh, within the Crane Creek Master Plan are actually part of our land development code. So, there's actually code and enforcement measures in place to help, you know, kind of keep that what was a master plan, uh, moving along.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Grady. I hear Commissioner Durant down here?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Quick question. I understand that these, uh, guidelines, standards, as you may call it, are intended to protect the character of the, the existence, if you use this example, the existing neighborhood, from developers coming in and completely add, adding, uh, structures that are completely out of line with what's existing there now, and also redevelopment. But are any of these standards? But are any of these standards, guidelines gonna impose, uh, cost on the existing residents to bring their homes up to some new standard that they didn't, they hadn't planned on?
There's not an immediate requirement for, you know, if this is, if this overlay is enacted for the Olympia area, it's not a tomorrow, okay, now you all have to bring yours into compliance. Uh, it's just as renovations occur, and I think we have to make sure we look at what renovations are, or new construction occurs, that this will probably be more applicable to it than, um, just, you know, your everyday, you know, maintenance of your home. So it's not, we're gonna go back and see, now you all must come into compliance and, you know, have a set date or anything.
Chairman. Um, to echo my two colleagues' point in what the, the, the current in vogue expression of naturally occurring affordable housing, i.e. those existing residents in place, um, the only language that I see under how it'd be utilized, um, is to provide staff to be able to consult when reviewing proposed projects. Um, to my colleague's point, it would be more comfortable to see a specific trigger, i.e. more than 50% of the assessed value of the property being improved, when there's a specific threshold as to when that kicks in. I mean, I think that that's a very important, some, some metric, you know, I mean, that's, you know, when it comes to code compliance, that's one threshold that's in place is, you know, when you exceed 50%, so, you know, in terms of throwing it into, when it come into compliance.
Yeah, a- and again, as I stated to, um, Commissioner Grayden and Durant, um, I think those type of ideas that you, you know, that you're speaking of would be something that we, we definitely would look to try to incorporate within this overlay, um, because again, there are, you know, every good deed always has some unforeseen circumstances that we weren't, you know, aware of. So we want to make sure that we try to get this right, you know, going forward. Um, and so your idea, um, to have a certain cap, um, would actually be something that would be great to incorporate, or something we'll look at when this language comes before you.
Here.
Yes, Commissioner Taylor.
Uh, a couple of questions just for clarification. Um, so the Capital City Mill District Plan has been adopted, correct?
Yes, sir.
And so, can you tell me just a little bit, um, how does it vary from this actual guidelines? What's the difference between it and the guidelines? Just for my clarification, please.
Commissioner, I can speak on that. Um, so the Capital City, oh, uh, my name is Mark Riedelhofer, I'm the neighborhood planner. Um, so the Capital City Mill District Plan, it's a master plan that sets out the goals and objectives for a particular neighborhood area. So for the Capital City Mill District Plan is a joint plan with, uh, the county and the city, uh, covering, um, the Granby, Whaley, and Olympia neighborhoods, with Olympia being the county's jurisdiction. And, um, with the plan, it sets out a number of, a number of things that the residents and through research and developing the plan, uh, they would like to see in the future. And so, uh, it's more of a guiding document, similar to how we have our master plan, to show, uh, different things that we should try and undertake, um, that the area's residents want to see. And so this particular, uh, document that we're, uh, gonna bring before you is something that comes about from that plan, is something that was suggested as a, um, something that should be implemented for these areas.
This is supplemental to that district plan?
Right.
And the other question I had was, um, project consultants were postal preservation solutions? Did they actually put this document together, uh, with staff's assistance, or did staff put it together after consulting with them?
It was mainly put together by the consultants with direction and, uh, oversight by, by county staff. Yes.
Final question, um, and I still don't really know this for, for other areas or, or even other zoning, I'll just say violations, I guess. How is this kind of stuff policed? And, you know, how do violations get, um, enacted? I guess if there's a violation, what happens? Is it a fine? Is it, cause if it's a, what's to stop or deter somebody from just saying, okay, we'll do it anyway, we'll pay the fine and we don't conform to these guidelines or whatever? That may not have ever happened, but I'm just, I'm never really sure how we police any of these zoning violations, if they do exist or they do occur.
All right, so you're, there are different types of zoning violations, and I'll speak specifically for zoning. Um, so most of them are dealing with use and activity that they play, so you, you, um, I know you put a second home on your property that, you know, that exceeds a square footage, you know, or, I'm sorry, maybe that, that's, that's a little extreme. Um, say someone has a house and they start running a construction company out of there. So that is a use, that is a clear, that's a violation of our codes. Um, what this code primarily deals with is development, construction, building. And so those are things that prior to them receiving a building permit, or prior to them getting any permits to redevelop the property, or to start new construction, those things that from a, the building department, uh, um, do their review, but so will zoning. And also one of the things that we're, looks like what we're going to have to enact, and we'll have a discussion further with council on how to do this, is that we'll more likely have to establish an architectural review committee, um, because that kind of takes it out of staff's hands. We don't want to be, you know, the sole judges of whether something is fully compliant with the, um, Olympia area, especially as far as keeping in character and design. Um, so that's something that we'll be talking to council about developing. But for what this document will, um, will, will allow, those things will be just at the very beginning. So if you can't get past essentially the zoning approval of it, then we can, um, typically won't get started. Now, again, to go a little further with, with your question is, if someone could get our approval to do something one way or the other, and then they decide, oh, I'm gonna go and take a different cut, shortcut to this, that's when we would then, as a staff, we would then issue notices of violation, give them a chance to correct, we could issue a subsequent summons, um, to the, um, to the violator, take them to court, and in some cases, we'll try to put a stop work order on the property to stop them from proceeding further.
Thank you, staff. Thank you. Any other questions for their discussion?
County currently using a design review board in any other form or fashion?
Johnson.
Not that I'm aware of. Um, I know the areas that typically have those are more on your municipalities, uh, another city, Columbia has, has some, and I'm pretty sure other areas, like, you know, maybe a Forest Acres may also have one, um, the county doesn't. So one of the things that we did today was we did reach out to the city to try to get a little understanding on how they established the makeup, um, and what some of the duties and authority of their, of their architectural review committees may be, um, and we may try to model that. But again, those are things that we will have a discussion with council regarding, um, on how they would like to proceed, because they may want to have a different, um, you know, setup of, for architectural review body.
Other questions? All right, well, good discussion on this, and we will continue to hear about this in the upcoming months, correct, staff?
Yes, sir. So ideally, we'll bring this before you in March, um, with some language. And again, this is, we'll have it as an action item, but that does not mean that we're, we're telling you, go ahead and vote yea and nay on it. Um, if there are some things that you see that you feel some changes are needed, more information, or things that we need to do, that can, those items can, you know, the item can be deferred until, you know, another month, or whenever you decide, um, to, that you want to take action on, on to allow staff to bring you the needed information or the requested information.
Right, so moving the process along, you would give us a document, and you would request edits, and then we would give you that as suggestions, or make motions on changes?
Ideally, we will bring you a document, um, more for, you know, really for us to have a discussion on. Um, and again, if you feel comfortable, you know, as a body with that document, and you're ready to send it on, and you would take your vote, because we will have it as an action item to send forward to council. Um, if you don't feel that you're ready and that more discussion is necessary, either via a work session, or just give staff some time to put the things together to bring to the, um, to your next meeting, then that's what we will do. Uh, so it, it would be there for you to take action, but it is not so much what you're s- suggesting to us. What we're doing is we're bringing it to you, hopefully we'll have a good discussion, but ultimately, what it will be forwarded to county council will be the recommendations of the planning commission.
That's everybody? Thank you. One more question.
Oh, yes. Uh, just one.
Commissioner Taylor.
One point of clarification in the document, are there three, like, sections of Olympia Mill? Cause I thought I saw like Olympia Mill Village, and then I saw Old Hill, and then New Hill. Were those three separate areas, or?
Correct. So, um, the Olympia neighborhood as a historic district was built in separate, uh, periods of significance, so, um, that's where the division comes from, where one section of the neighborhood was built, I believe, 1900, 1910, whereas another section of the neighborhood didn't, uh, wasn't constructed until the 40s. So obviously, they have completely different architectural style, so we have to treat them differently as far as the guidelines go.
Thank you. Commissioner Durant was next?
Yes.
Bryce, um, if I understood you, this is the first one that the county is doing, Olympia Mill Village?
Yes, sir. I believe this is actually the first time that this has actually been incorporated in any of our land development codes. Uh, we're a little excited about this, um, you know, at least from, you know, my many, many, many years of being here at the county. Um, it's the first time that we've been able to actually look at, um, you know, putting a little, again, I'm going back, putting some teeth into some of the, the master plan areas. Um, again, everything right now is, is extremely suggestive, and it's like, hey, if you do this, you can, um, and if not, you'll just default to the underlying zoning. But in this particular case, we feel this would be beneficial to actually kind of meeting what those guidelines and recommendations are.
Next question will actually be my own. Can expect more of these to come, come toward the commission for the, of the neighborhoods?
You know, I'm not sure. Um, again, we have, how many master plans do we have, Mark?
We currently have 11 master plans.
11 master plans, um, some of them are quite expansive, um, I think like Lower Richland, it's Lower Richland, right? It's basically, this is all master plan. And so, you know, to try to come up with an overlay over that, just, I don't know if that would be appropriate, uh, but maybe certain areas within it may be. Uh, we would have to just look at each individual master plan, uh, and kind of make a determination on whether it's something that's warranted. Again, I think, um, that Olympia is any, um, more special than maybe some of the other mess, master plan areas, but it is a very historic area, um, just from, you know, the, uh, from its previous functions, uh, to the development of Richland County and the city of Columbia, to the housing and a lot of number of things in that area. Uh, so that's one of the reasons why that was one of the first ones that was chosen. Again, we will need to look at each one of the other master plan areas and see if this is something that's warranted within those first.
Mr. Frierson.
Seven of the introduction, where it speaks of the Pacific Mill area from 1920 to 1949, it talks about, um, the medieval traditional style.
Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Thank you.
On page seven, where it speaks of the Pacific Mill section of the plan from 1941 through 1949, it refers to the traditional style with asbestos. Now, I'm wondering whether or not when renovations are made, or even if they're not being made, is there an effort to remove that? And if so, who pays for that?
That would be the property owner. Um, again, if someone is gonna come in and, let's say, remodel a home and there's asbestos present, just, I mean, not just within, um, this overlay designation. I mean, that would be any home, whether it be, you know, a home in any of the communities you live in. If you go in there and there's asbestos present, you're going to have to make, you know, you're gonna have to take that into consideration as you're making any renovations or any new construction, or even if you're gonna just tear the home down.
Well, you know, since these houses are very old, I would think even if you're not renovating them, for it to be there that long, the asbestos, it might be leaking out or something. I mean, I'm just curious about, um, are there some environmental stipulations that require it to be moved, removed in an historic district, where in the houses are, you know, supposed to be the same characteristic, but that building material is a health hazard? And since it is, are there funds available somewhere to help take care of it?
I, I, Commissioner Frierson, I'll tell you, I can, I'll be happy to answer that if you don't mind at the next meeting, because I think what your, what your question is, is it's more general than just specific to Olympia. And I think that's more of a, a question I would just like answered by a building official, because he can give you that information, uh, when it comes to homes with asbestos.
Okay, but I'm not really being general here, because, see, it talks about the houses in that particular time period having that particular health hazard, so that's why I'm really concerned about that.
Ye- yes, ma'am, and what I was, what I, just what I'm going along, you know, throughout Richland County, there are a lot of older homes that probably may be in the same condition when it comes to asbestos. And so the question is, how do we handle those as lo- a- along with how we handle the ones within Olympia area?
Okay, thank you.
And, uh, in regards to the architectural nature of that, um, there were many houses built in the Olympia area that time that had asbestos sighting, um, and as far as any renovations or new build, um, we're obviously not gonna require that a new house or a renovated house put asbestos sighting on it. Um, there is a modern equivalent. Oh, yes, I just wanted to add that on, so, since, uh, since the topic is brought up, there is a modern equivalent for any, uh, any renovations or new builds that, um, that mimic the look of that original sighting, where they don't have to worry about, um, the health hazards of that.
Thanks again, staff. Anything else? Any other comments, concerns? I, I'm excited that we're working on this, doing some extra planning for these overlay districts. And you mentioned that there's 11 neighborhood master plans, so this one that we're working on, if we get this right, we could be setting up a really good template for the other ones. So let's take our time, and thanks for participation. Yes, Commissioner Johnson, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I was trying to be quiet, but you, you made a good point in terms of where we're going. So let me just throw big picture, because I want to be supportive of what you're doing. But, you know, I raised, my first threshold question is, at what point do we kick in? At, at, at what point is that threshold? If it's 50%, uh, you, whatever that is that I'm up with. The other is, um, separate from the neighborhood plans that had been previously adopted, when a scope of work like this is carried out, when you all come in with these updates, I would like for you on the front end to address how public participation was engaged in putting this document together even before we saw it. I, I want that, that should be a leading part of the presentation as we move forward. Please.
Yes, sir. And, uh, as far as the public participation, we go off of, uh, the master plan development process that, and, uh, is very involved and required to have lots of pu- public participation. And then as far as what projects we work on from these master plans, a lot of that is driven by, um, push from the community. So as, with the Neighborhood's Department, a lot of our direction comes from the community outreach that we do. So for the Olympia Master Plan, it, um, it comes about because we have constant communication with the Olympia neighborhood asking for it. So as far as where we go from here with other master plan areas, um, a lot of it comes from just... um, a lot of it comes from just grassroots, those neighborhoods communicating with the Neighborhood Department that that's what they want to see. So from the very beginning and the, where it's initialized is from the public. And then throughout the process, we involve the public as much as possible, including, um, in the adoptions and edits that we'll be going through for these, uh, for this particular document.
Yes, Commissioner Serks?
All right, um, one last question that, uh, came up kind of based on what, something that, that you had said that this, um, will be the, the first and perhaps the, the first of at least a few, maybe many, um, of, of these types of overlays, uh, to be put in place. Is, um, is there something, um, stating at which point, uh, overlays like this could be amended? Are they tied to the, the master plan? Or, I mean, given that this is, you know, we're all heading into uncharted waters, into, um, and with something like this, is there a time period that you, there's a review process to look at what's gone right, what hasn't, what can be improved?
No, sir. I don't, I don't have a specific answer for you right now because, again, some of these things are nu- new. Um, this is new for us also as we're looking at it. But, uh, but along maybe the some of the same lines that you're, that you, that you've brought up, we've, as a staff, we've even talked about our master plans that we have throughout the county where they don't have an expiration. We didn't build one in, um, expiration for the master plan to, to essentially no longer, um, it will do, to cease or a time period in which we will go back and reevaluate those. We, we have, we, that was not built in. Um, so, but I do think that, you know, there's a good potential for us to try to incorporate that type of language within this overlay, uh, going forward so that we can address, you know, concerns, give us a, give us a required opportunity. Uh, but for us to go back and look at the overlay itself and is it functioning the way maybe we hoped it would? And maybe there's some faults within it that maybe some amendments are necessary.
Thank you.
Commissioner Serks, thank you, commissioners. Going once, going twice, we're ready to move on to the next topic. Good discussion, though. Thank you. If we are ready, then we're going to move on to, um, number eight B, equivalency zone districts. Flip it back to staff.
All right, um, I'm going to turn this over to, um, to Matthew Smith, a comprehensive planner. Um, provide some information to you, I believe he already has. Uh, one of the things that we talked about as a staff, again, as we kind of go forward, there's probably still a bit of a learning curve for us just as well. Uh, and I know there are things that we're still trying to get an understanding and also to, you know, some ways kind of teach this to our other staff members who weren't fully involved with the adoption of this land and code, land development code previously, and also the citizens that come in. So one of the things we, we understand that as a, as a commissioner, you know, um, December twenty twenty-three, uh, more than a month ago, we were operating essentially out of one code. And you take a break and you come back and we're telling you surprise, here we go, new code in that nice binder that you received. Um, so we, we were trying to make some of these, these, some of the comparisons, um, a little easier for you and just to show you, because one of the things that you did, um, that the planning commission recommended and county council ultimately adopted was that we go with an equivalency, um, zoning through the county. Um, and so we would kind of wanted just to show you, okay, this is what it was and this is what it would be. And kind of give you some of the comparables to those, to those, um, two districts. Um, and also, I think when it gets to, um, Matthew would also talk about the com- well, first he's going to talk about the comprehensive plan in which, um, a lot of times, you know, we will tell you whether something is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Also, within the comprehensive plan, it also often, um, recommends certain zoning designations that are appropriate for that particular, um, designation. So we wanted to show you what those new designations will be, um, as we prepare staff reports and make our recommendations, um, to you.
So the LDC rewrite translation table that you see up on the screen and hand out that you guys received, um, mirrors what we've been using in our comprehensive plan as it relates to the land development code. If you look at your chart, you'll see you'll have twenty twenty-one LDC column, two thousand five LDC column, and then the comp plan flume or future land use map column. And as this relates to one another, you can see how, uh, we'll start with just, uh, the first one, for instance, that the OS designation in the new LDC translates into what the old LDC was, which was parks and rec or traditional recreation open space, which also translates in our comprehensive plan as a recommended or existing zoning district of similar character for conservation. So when you look at these future land use map designations and how we recommend approval or denial, uh, we start kind of with the future land use map. And so as you move down these columns, you'll see how they correlate with one another, uh, how the LDC correlates with the future land use map. And each, um, future land use map designation correlates with the LDC designations or the zoning designations. Uh, each one of these, uh, has mostly a equivalent. The ones that do not are new zoning designations or overlays. Um, there's not much gray area, if any, uh, when it comes to this. They were pretty, uh, spot on when it comes to, uh, translating from LDC, from twenty twenty-one to two thousand five LDCs. And if you look in your comp plans, uh, when you get a moment later on down the road, you'll notice that they do correlate with one another pretty well, um, as a mirror what the previous code did. Yeah, so I think if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, staff. I'll speak for myself. And understanding this, when we look at a, you know, future map amendment coming in front of us and staff looks at it and gives us a comp plans of approve or denial, this is what we're, we're looking at. Am I correct? You're looking at the, uh, future land use map and we're comparing it here to what? Old code that we looked at last year and in the past and now twenty twenty-one?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Questions, comments? Because we'll get thrown into this next month when we do have some map amendments, correct? Okay.
Just kind of chime in a little bit. Um, and one of the, I think that this actually, kind of wish we had just given this to you last, previously when we were, uh, when you would have cases come before you. So, you know, kind of give you an example how this works with us is, you know, we may, and I, and I'm going to go back to the old zoning designations, um, because I think everybody's more familiar with those. Um, so someone may come in and ask for a rezoning request that is, um, maybe going to, say, a GC designation. I mean, they want, they're requesting a general commercial, which is the old GC zoning designation. And, but within the future land use map is designated for more of a neighborhood, um, you know, medium density. So one of the things that you'll note that within our discussion, we always mention that that zoning designation will introduce uses, um, that don't match with the, the, um, neighborhood scale type zoning, uh, within those districts. And they introduce, um, what's the term we use a lot of? Remember, just top of my head, but there's a, you know, kind of term we always use that, um, that, that essentially that the use will bring in uses that really are more, um, yeah, yeah, well, essentially.
Character?
Yes, yes, yeah, out of character with the, um, uses that are allowed. So I think what you'll see a lot more, and I might call it this, I don't want to call this a cheat sheet, but it will, I think you'll kind of see immediately which zoning type of zoning designations, um, each of the, the future land use maps kind of recommends for an area, um, when they come before you.
Sure. Yes.
Mr. Price?
Yes, thank you.
Something there. Going forward, starting at our next meeting, if we see, when we see map amendment requests, and a typical one we generally see under the old code is rural to general commercial. So if, the, going forward, what we see is either agricultural or homestead going to general commercial as an example.
Um, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that's what you'll see now. So, yeah, you won't see the RU. Uh, you won't see anything that's in that middle column, uh, coming forward, except there was one legacy zoning designation, that's light industrial. And the M one, excuse me, the M one light industrial. Um, and we do have a GC that's slightly different, um, as far as some of the uses. But so it's not, it's not ide- uh, identical to what was in two thousand five version, but it's along the same lines. Um, but yes, so you, but normally you will, the RU that you used to see was, it will either be, um, or OS, I mean, excuse me, AG or HM or RT. Um, the, you know, some of the other zoning designations will, you know, the, the new, um, designations will be what you have in front of you now versus the old ones.
Staff, I have a question. Will the, will the maps be ready? With the, with the councils approved and at one point, there was a zoning twenty twenty-one map.
The, the maps.
Website.
The maps are actually available online at this time.
When we pull up, uh, original maps web app, it still shows the old zoning. Just heads up for next month. I'm always going to say, hey, show the map and that's going to be another piece of confusion.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, well, I mean, we, we do still have the map, the, the map that actually shows actually how, what it was and what it be, and what it is now. Um, so we, we will have that available, uh, for the.
I remember a website like that before the restart process. So I was wondering if that tool's been updated yet. But thank you. Matt's giving me a thumbs up.
Getting pulled up.
Or is, did I see hands over here for questions?
Not a question. Can I just make a comment, please?
Yes, Commissioner Johnson. Thank you.
Um, staff, for, for you all as leadership, um, I just wanted to just say as a binder for you all, just stop. And you've, you've got this new code coming in place. We're navigating this transition and adjustment phase. But just to take time to, y'all have turned a corner. There were months when it felt like we might have gotten to this place. We were going month by month, we're change by change. So just a tip of the hat that y'all stayed the course and you've pushed through. And now, of course, the, the trouble of trying to figure out, now, what did that correlate to? And what does it correlate to now? But still, just to stop and pause and just say, yeah, we got the new code in place. So that's just a, a tip of the hat to you, your leadership team, and, um, say.
Yeah, well, I, I, again, thank you. First of all, thank you. I think it's, uh, I speak on behalf of the entire staff. Um, this didn't go well for a while. Um, really, I think one of the things that, um, I don't know if a lot of people realize that from a staff standpoint, I think this is probably about as difficult for us as we go forward because, you know, I can speak for, you know, like I said, my many years of, you know, being here with the county. Tommy's been here, um, you know, for some years. Matthew's been here, what, you know, four years now, the big four. He's almost at the five years, almost a big boy in planning now. But, you know, and Tina's here. Um, and the reason why I mentioned us is because right now, if you were to ask us, most of us, tell us what's in, um, what does this zoning designation allow? Tell us what these standards are. Tell us, from the old code, we can tell you. Will this use be allowed? We can tell you, just like that. Now it's like, hold please. And we have to flip and find it. And now I'm picking up the phone, hey, Tommy, where was that? Hey, Matthew, show me where that is because it is, it's going to be, that learning curve for us is still there. Um, but it's something that I think, you know, we're willing to, you know, to dive into and, and, um, you know, because it's something we have to do and our positions, we're required to know this information. But it's going to take us a little time where we're very comfortable where we can just talk about the code in front of us.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, and thanks, staff. Really, it's a big undertaking and we will do this together.
Yaki.
Yes, anything else?
Mr. Smith has the, um, the map up.
So the map that you see on the screen right now will be, is the interactive map that is available on the Richland County website. If you scroll down on the right-hand side of the website, you'll see the land development code icon. And you can just follow that prompt all the way through till you get to the interactive maps right there, and that'll take you to the interactive maps where you can type in your TMS number, your address. And if you hover over one of the parcels, it'll tell you what you were and what you're going to. And the reason why we don't have this particular GIS set up like it was is because we have not incorporated it into the assessor's data yet.
For now, let's bookmark this one so we're ready and marked.
Can you put the overlay districts on there?
Yeah.
Yes, let's take note, the overlay districts around here as well. It's a powerful tool.
So, so those of us like me that constantly are lazy and just go type in Richland County GIS, I have to remind myself not to do that, that I have to go to that link.
We'll be more than happy to share a link to you that will take you directly to the map.
Please do, yes. Commissioners, any follow-up questions on number eight A, uh, sorry, eight B? Did we discuss development standards as well on this second table? There we go.
Sure, so this one's pretty straightforward. It's just a comparison of the development standards that are available when each zoning district is identified in the code. Uh, each zoning district gives a brief summary of density and dimensional standards. Uh, and it's just a comparison of what they were and what they're going to be. And the white will be the new zoning districts and the gray will be the former. And that just kind of gives you the, tell of the tape of what it was and what it's going to be and how that has changed.
Okay, so let's, uh, step through one for an example, like if we did R one.
So R one used to have, uh, so R, R one has a equivalency of RSE. And you can see that the density of RSE used to be two point one eight, now it's one point three three. And where your lot square footage, as, as that relates to the density, your lots have to be bigger now in order to put one lot on. And your lot width becomes smaller, though. And as you can move, move through, you can see how those dimensional standards variate in some, but in others, they actually stay the same. For instance, if you look at the RT to RU, the density changes instead of the lot area. But then when you start talking about the lot width se- and setbacks, those have not changed.
Thank you, staff. It's going to be in our packet for a map amendment, this little table piece? Or we just make sure we refer to this?
I, I think there's a way we're, we're trying to, you know, we're still playing with this right now to actually kind of have it, um, have it as a permanent placeholder within the agendas that you. to actually kind of have it, have it as a permanent placeholder within the agendas that you receive so that you'll always be able to kind of flip back to those as needed.
Thank you. I know there's a lot of new work ahead of you. Don't want to add to it. Just trying to think of this meeting as a preparation for the big game in March when we have properties in front of us.
Oh, again, we, we welcome any suggestions or requests from the planning commission. Because we know that you're asking this really for your own benefit and your decision-making, but also, also it helps out the citizens that come, not only the ones that are applying for a request, but also those who are observing that request to really kind of figure out themselves whether they support it or they don't support it or just have questions. So anything that we can put in the packet or have available, whether it be even on the website or just handouts at these planning and zoning counter, we more than welcome your suggestions or recommendations as we put those together.
Thank you. Anything else tonight, commissioners? Questions from staff? Did we discuss all of our other items, staff?
Yes, sir.
It looks like we have. Then if we're looking at wrapping up, I will take a motion for number nine adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Durant. Second?
Second.
Second. Commissioner Serks, and can you do a vote of hand, staff?
Those are favors unanimous?
Thank you, staff. Have a good night, everybody.